Thank you. We'd like to call the Shreveport City Council meeting to order. If you have your cell phones, we ask that you please put them on, vibrate, or if you would be kind enough to cut them off at this particular time. We're going to ask that Pastor Austin would come and give us a prayer. And ask that Councilman Bowden would lead us in the pledge.
I did not come down here to pray, feeling like I'm the only Baptist preacher in the house. Father God, we come this evening to take care of the business of this city. We ask you, God, to be with these councilmen and women, be with our mayor and our C O. But Lord, what we do today, we pray that you will be pleased and that you will be acceptable on what the matters of our city is, that these men and women are concerned about the welfare, not only of our citizens, but the infrastructure of this city. In Jesus' name, amen.
The United States of America, and it's a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilwoman Taggart.
President.
Councilwoman Fuller. Councilman Nicholson.
President.
Councilman Motion. Councilman Dedson. Councilman Green.
I'm here.
And Councilwoman.
Here.
Thank you. Tomorrow, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference Monday, March 21st, 2022, and the City Council meeting Tuesday, March 22nd, 2022. Does any member of the council have any awards recognition of distinguished guests today not to exceed 15 minutes? Would anyone have any one tomorrow? Thank you. Mr. Whitehorn, do you have any awards of recognition today from the mayor that would not exceed 15 minutes?
We don't have any today. He may have some tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Does any member have any questions or concerns about the property standards for Mr. Green? Anyone?
Did we get over to that address earlier this morning that we discussed?
Yes, that's done.
And the one that's on the demo that we were discussing also, that Darian?
Um, Darian, I'll get with the contractor, but he's signed his contracts. We're just waiting on him to go ahead and get started.
So I have.
Thank you.
Chair, the lot that is on Lakeshore Drive near Portland, where Portland and Lakeshore intersect, contact them about cleaning that lot and that.
Across the street from the liquor store?
Mm-hmm.
I believe that's adjudicated, if I'm not mistaken, so we'll.
It's a for sale sign up there.
Say again?
It's a for sale sign up.
Okay, well, let me.
And the building that's across from the Friendship House in Allen Dale. I'm going to get an update on that building.
Mr. Green, I said I didn't have anything, but I would like an update, when you have time, about the status of the town home that burned up near Fairfield and Dudley. I know that's in Councilwoman Fuller's district, but it's near mine, and many concerned constituents about the status of that property. Thank you.
And Mr. Green, the skating rink on MLK.
So you.
Oh, skating rink on MLK.
When you were speaking on the, on Portland, you mean directly by that old liquor store? Or you're too much across from?
By the liquor store, from that old liquor store, all the way to that lot right there. You go back towards Lilian and all those streets right there.
That's okay, I'm not fine. Yeah, that's a for sale sign.
Yeah, it's a for sale sign right up there. Thank you, sir.
All righty.
Thank you, Mrs. Green.
Okay.
Uh, will there be a revenue collection plan implementation report tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Public hearing, I see there are none. Mr. Whitehorn, will there be any legislation to be added tomorrow?
None that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Not legislation to be added, but the MPC has requested that the two Z B A appointees, that the rules be suspended and that they be added to the agenda for tomorrow so that they're able to have their meeting this month.
Thank you. Today, we will hear public comments on non-agenda items and agenda items. And this time, we will have requests to speak, and each one will have three minutes, and the vice chair will control the time. Okay.
Kirkpatrick Williams?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is Kirkpatrick Williams. I work with Compassion for Lives. I'm here today to talk to you a little bit about utilizing the SPAR facilities for some programming that we are operating. Currently, I am a GED Highset instructor, and I'm teaching GED Highset right now, both English and math, in our facilities on Pine's Road. What we have found is the need for the class is starting to outgrow the facility that we have. We have a lot of, a lot of our citizens here that are looking for GED Highset. And we're trying to help as much as we can, but I'm having to turn students away because I just don't have a big enough facility. My assets that I am able to use, the facility at Bill Cockrell Community Center, so that we can have a larger facility, be able to facilitate the GED Highset classes. It helps everybody in the community. Once we get that GED, we're making higher wages. We become better taxpayers. We've kind of run into some roadblocks to be able to utilize that facility, so I want to bring that to the council, see if there is any way that the council would consider us using that facility to provide GED Highset instruction. I do want to point out that in the past, we have provided certain instructions in, in the SPAR facilities. I did an I T for seniors class that was highly successful at Hattie Perry Community Center. I've been requested to bring that class back to them, and as well as other community centers have asked for this as well. But our ask right now is, if we can be in that facility, be able to provide that service.
And you see how many, how many, how many people you said you're seeing now?
So right now, I'm seeing five people. I actually have about 15 people that have registered. I just don't have the facility to be able to facilitate that. Some students, I have two students that I've had to resort to doing virtual learning because I just don't have the space for them. But this is very hands-on training. When they are hands-on, when they're in person, they are learning much, much better than they are doing virtually. And I've got nothing but great compliments on the, on the method in which I teach it and, and what they're learning.
So when you say roadblocks, nobody had any other question. You had the roadblocks. When you say roadblocks, what are the roadblocks you're encountering?
So the roadblocks we've encountered, we have sent formal requests to use SPAR facilities at Bill Berry and SPAR facilities at Bill Cockrell. We were, we received an email back saying that we could not utilize the facilities, but we were not actually given a reason why. In fact, the email states that I don't know why. That was, that was a part of the email that, that we received. So I'm not exactly sure why. I did get a call today that I thought was really interesting because it said, it read about a rule that SPAR has that the facilities cannot be used for ongoing services, which I've never seen that rule before because, as I stated, we were at Hattie Perry Community Center doing I T for seniors. We did that for about four months. We've been requested to come back and do that again. They also requested that we come in and do coding for kids. They've requested that, and that I T for seniors class has been requested at three other community centers, and there's never been a rule that said it could not be an ongoing activity for the center.
Mr. Chairman, I think we want ongoing GED classes if we can accommodate them. Hope we can resolve that problem.
I just took a good email and said that I don't know why, that, that, I don't get what, what would the reason be, so.
I definitely would not mind forwarding that to you and sharing that with you. That was, that was my concern as well, and that's why, that's why I sent the email to you to be here today, because that was my concern as well. We have, we have a lot of citizens that, that it's very, very hard for them to admit, I don't have a GED. That's not easy for people to admit. We have been very successful in getting people to open up about that, starting that learning process. I have, I have people that are doing algebra, that are doing advanced geometry, that would have never done that before. They would have never done that before. It is, it's heartbreaking to me to tell someone, I know you want to learn, and I appreciate you taking that step forward, but I just don't have the room to accommodate you. That, that's heartbreaking to say. I've gone to doing classes in the morning and in the evening and virtual. I've gone to doing classes on Saturdays. Any way that I can accommodate being able to see as many people as I can. But it has gotten to where I'm just getting more people than the, than the five chairs I have.
I'd just like to ask that you would get with Councilman Bowden and Councilman Nicholson, and we'll see if we can work that out.
Definitely. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Uh, Robert McKitten? Robert? Is that Robert McKitten? Carla Button?
Hello, how are you guys doing today? Carla Button, 2524 Lakeway Drive, Executive Director of Compassion for Lives. Also, just to piggyback off what Dr. Williams explained to you guys, we did a successful event at Hattie Perry Park as well, Stop the Violence Event we just did on March 19th. It was great. We had a lot of individuals come out of the community that wanted to play part, formerly incarcerated, that wanted to come out and talk about the root causes of what we're seeing here in the city of Shreveport. And we've also sent a proposal, once again, to the SPAR because we decided that we want to go to every community to do this event because it was successful. We have, by now, we have the youth, those same young men that you guys are looking for that are saying, we want to stop this violence, to step up, to say they want to be a part of it. So we've come out, once again, to ask you guys, we've got an email again. No, you cannot use the SPAR recreation to continue on the Stop the Violence events in Bill Berry Park, also Lakeside Recreation Center. So I'm kind of confused here. We have a city right now that's collapsed by crime, and you have young individuals and older, formerly incarcerated, that wants to step up and come out and find out what's going on, to find the root causes of these events. And once again, the SPAR recreational center has told us no, that we cannot use the SPAR recreational centers. We did, I think, a contract before, prior with you guys for the SPAR, and you guys said yes. And that's how Dr. Williams was able to go into Hattie Perry Park to provide the I T program for the seniors, and also been requesting to do coding for the, for the youth. So once again, I'm asking today, the City Council, can we utilize the SPAR recreational centers to continue on the Stop the Violence event? I've also reached Dr. Wayne Smith last week, and he said he would love to be a part of the Stop the Violence event. So please, let us continue on to help stop the violence in the city of Shreveport. Thank you.
Eric Hodgson? And Vanessa Smith?
Good afternoon. My name is Vanessa Smith. I am the co-founder for Compassion for Lives and also the Director of Programs. I think our biggest question is, why can we not get into the SPAR? More so because we've established the contract with the city and being able to get into the SPAR. Now we've reached, we're getting emails stating that, I don't know, it's above my head. Please ask my supervisors. So at that point, we're here because we're asking to get into the SPAR to provide services. Compassion for Lives is about compassion and serving the community. We've been doing this for 10 years. We don't do it because we're looking for a payout. We do it because we love helping people, and this is what we do. So I'm simply standing here asking, as a co-founder and the Director of Programs, can Compassion for Lives be allowed into the city to work in the SPAR?
I can't answer that question. I think we should probably end up speaking to the director there. For whatever reason, I don't know. I, if someone sent that email, then there was a reason for it, I'm assuming, and it could be for whatever reason, and it can be an insurance deal, it can be whatever. I don't know. I, I, I don't know. I hadn't seen the contract. I don't know what, what it is, but I would, I would refer that to the director. And I don't, if, if she wants to speak to that today, or if she wants to speak outside, we can talk about that at that time, and I'll reach out to her, and we'll go from there.
Thank you. Thank you. There will be executive appointments on tomorrow. There are no consent agenda items. Mr. Whitehorn, would you proceed with regular agenda legislation?
Resolution number 132, authorizing the mayor to execute an option to ground lease between the city of Shreveport and Shreveport H P Allen Dale LLC. Resolution 165, approving the restoration tax abatement renewal application for Venue Solutions LLC, 601 Malum Street. Resolution 24, authorizing the employment of legal counsel to represent the city of Shreveport. Resolution 44, authorizing the mayor to execute an off-airport land lease between the city of Shreveport and the Federal Aviation Administration. Resolution 46, to congratulate and celebrate Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, Zeta, Lotta Zeta Chapter, for their 60 years of dedicated service. Resolution 47, proclaiming April 11th through April 15th, 2022, to be National Community Development Week. Resolution 48, to commend the Mericor Senior Southern University of Shreveport, Cattle Parish, excuse me, Cattle, Bozier, De Soto Foster Grandparent Volunteer Program to recognize May 5th, 2022, as a Mericor's Senior Foster Grandparent Volunteer Day. Resolution 49, calling upon the federal government to urgently address the student loan crisis and to enact a plan to cancel student loan debt and begin the transition to education as a public good. Resolution 50, to support House Bill Number 774, filed in the 2022 regular session of the Louisiana Legislature relative to expungements of certain amounts of possession of marijuana. Legislation, Resolution Number 51, to congratulate and celebrate Elizabeth Ellie Franks for being named Region 6, 8th Grade Student of the Year in the state of Louisiana. Resolution 52, to thank President Biden for committing the United States to accepting 100,000 Ukrainian refugees and to convey the city of Shreveport's willingness to receive and warmly welcome those refugees. Resolution 53, to support the development of passenger rail service from Fort Worth, Texas, through the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, to Atlanta, Georgia, along the I-20 corridor. Resolution 54, endorsing grant application submission to the U.S. Department of Transportation to secure funds for the 2022 discretionary grant funding. I think that was the last one.
Thank you. Do we have any questions on any of these items? Will we have any questions tomorrow on any of them?
Um, Resolution 132, Mr. Chair, I'm going to ask that to be withdrawn.
132 withdrawn. Will there be any other questions tomorrow on any of these items, or are there any questions today?
Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I will yet again be postponing Resolution 165.
165?
Yes, sir.
All right. Anyone, anyone else?
Mr. Whitehorn, can you tell us a little bit about Resolution 53?
Is Mr. De Niro here? I don't see him.
Here's a rep, though.
Ms. Peck?
Okay, I'm sorry. Didn't see him.
I was out of town on a business trip. I can't really speak to Amtrak, but if you have any questions, I can relay them to him for tomorrow's meeting.
I actually just wanted him to tell us a little bit about it. I'm excited from what I've read thus far, but actually just what it means to the city of Shreveport.
I'm sorry.
Just what it means to the city of Shreveport.
Okay, I'll relay that to him. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Whitehorn, would you proceed with introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to April 26?
Resolution 55, authorizing the execution of a retain agreement between Attorney Scott J. Chafin relative to certain consent decree matters. Resolution 56, authorizing the approval of a price change and entering a contract with Hall Mac Corporation for the purchase of 18 25 cubic yard loader packers. Resolution 57, authorizing the mayor of the city of Shreveport to sign a consent of the assignment of Pine Wave Energy Partners Operating LLC of an oil and gas lease to Silver Hill Haynesville E and P LLC. Resolution 58, authorizing the city of Shreveport purchasing agent to reject all bids received for the flowerbed maintenance, maintenance Hollywood Markhouse, Elvis Presley Boulevard, and Kennedy Boulevards. Bid RFQ Number 22509. Resolution 59, authorizing the city of Shreveport purchasing agent to reject all bids received for the replaced roof on Lucas Administration Building. Bid RFQ Number 22-516. Resolution 60, adopting the system survey and compliance questionnaire required by the Legislative Auditor's Office of the state of Louisiana.
Are there any questions on any of these items?
On Resolution 57, what, what land does that encompass already?
I believe the land is really outside the city, but they have to have access through the city, and that's in Council District 11.
There you go.
Chairwoman, Chairwoman, Chairman, Engineering has requested that that resolution be withdrawn, and they're going to bring it back at a later time.
Thank you. Withdrawn. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, tomorrow, I would appreciate either the city attorney or the administration discussing Resolution 56 and describing generally how much money we're going to spend on these, these loaders and packers, and the cause of the delay, which has had citywide impact, not, not the fault of the administration, of course, but the vendor, and how much more we're proposing to pay for these packers, which we've had on order for quite a long time now. Thank you.
Yes.
Gary, can you speak to that? You want to talk about it today?
At your preference, Mr. Leach.
Gary, and is, did the Hall Mac people come?
I don't see them.
Okay, because the Hall Mac people had said they would be here?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm having allergy problems. I promise, that's all. Yes, sir, we, over a year ago, we placed an order for, or put out an I F B for 18 garbage trucks, of which we, we received, I think, four different quotes for them. We selected the low bidder, which was $163,000 per truck. You know, we were expecting to get, to take delivery of those trucks somewhere, I think, was around July, and they were not able to, to deliver them in that timeframe because of all of the supply chain issues that we had and, and that everybody's going through on, on pretty much everything. Sometime, because of that, we leased some vehicles, 10 vehicles, to help us get through that timeframe, which, you know, which was an expense of about $70,000 a month to lease those, so, to try to help get us through. When it got closer to time to be looking for, for delivery, then we were notified by Hall Mac that, that they weren't going to be able to deliver them for the cost that they had bid them. They had received, you know, increases that, you know, far beyond what they could absorb from the manufacturer of the, of the chassis, which was Plyler, was, was supplying those, as well as other increases for, for materials that they had to actually build the beds. The increase is, the round numbers are close enough, somewhere in the 17,000 to 18,000 range per, per vehicle. You know, we, we have met with our city attorney's office. We've had contract attorneys look at it and all, trying to figure out, you know, what we can, you know, what our options are. We could, we could not take, you know, their, their increase and not get the trucks and reorder, of which we had already done that through additional money that we had in the budget for this year. And, you know, that was, I guess, would be, be one of our options if they didn't deliver. But we're, you know, our prices that we got, which the low bidder was the same company, Hall Mac, was a low bidder, and it was an increase of around $90,000 was our lowest bid, you know, for this next, you know, for the same trucks for this next year. You know, probably the biggest problem for me, being responsible for sanitation, is, is getting the trucks. You know, and if we get out of line for these 18 trucks, then it's probably going to be another year to a year and a half, you know, to get, to get trucks again. So, you know, that was, that was probably, or let's say probably, that was my biggest concern, was I can't, you know, I don't want to let these get away. There's a line of people waiting to get them, you know, if we don't take them, you know. So, so anyway, you know, that's, that's kind of, yeah, I'm sure maybe Legal may want to add, add something to that, but, you know, we're, you know, we're looking at having to pay, you know, around $18,000 per truck more, you know, which is going to put us up, I believe, around the $182,000 or something like that, $1,000 per truck. You know, if we go through with ordering up new trucks again this year, we're going to be up, like I say, you know, about $90,000 above, you know, what we paid this, this last year.
I, I guess my concern, and I know you have this concern, Legal has this concern, as does the administration, is that this company gave us a bid, right?
Yes, sir.
And it wasn't, it wasn't an estimate of what the cost would be. It was a bid under public bid law.
That's correct.
And they've now come to us and said, they're not going to honor our bid, and we need to pay them more for something they bid a particular price per unit on. That's what's going on, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so, I mean, they're, they know we need these trucks, and they're squeezing us in a way that is inconsistent with the agreement they made with the city of Shreveport. I mean, that's my perspective based on what I've read. And, and I don't know that we have any choice but to go through with it, but.
It's a very, it's a very difficult situation for all of us, and I mean, we feel like we're almost being extorted also.
Well, I mean, that's, I think that's a good word, and it's, you know, we're the victims here. We didn't create the situation, but if a company bids to provide a, a product, a piece of equipment for a municipality like us and knows that we have an acute need for it, and then, as you said, extorts us for a price increase immediately before delivery, that leaves a very bad taste in my mouth as a member of the council. Thank you.
I totally understand that, and it does, it does for me, too, and I think everybody involved. And we, none of us, none of us like it. My, my big concern is that we call their hand on this, and we don't get the trucks, is what, what do I do at that point? You know, there, our rental trucks are going to go up to. You know, they're, our rental trucks are going to go up to $7,600 a month, I'm going to need, need probably 20 of them instead of the, the 10 that we've got, and that's going to be about, you know, 1.75 million dollars, you know, for, for, you know, per year, just for that, if we can get them, because I know they're, they're getting harder to get also. So, it's, it's a, a very unfortunate situation, and I wish I knew the answer to it.
Has Hall Mac indicated that these trucks are now available for delivery, and that they will deliver them upon our agreement to pay this increased price?
They are, they are getting the, I think, when we had talked last time, they had received one of the chassis. Once they received the chassis, then they will build the, the beds for them, the compactors and all, they go on it, but they, they were, they had received, I think, an invoice for them, so that they were there, or, you know, were in the process of being delivered. I have not spoken with them since we had a meeting a couple weeks ago, to see where they are in that process, but...
Mr. Chairman, be here to speak on it next week, and I'm sorry, two weeks, is that right? Daniel? Hall Mac, there'll be a second reading, right?
Yes. I've communicated with Hall Mac as it relates to the legislation that's been presented to you all. In that discussion with them, I told them that it was going to be a two-reader, and that they needed to come before the City Council, either Monday or Tuesday, on the day of second reading. But I wanted to give the council an opportunity to be aware of the information, and be prepared to ask all the questions from Hall Mac, prior to them coming here, because I think that dialogue is going to be very important.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
On the administration side, one of the biggest concerns that we talked about was the fact that we actually signed a contract with that company for the purchase of those trucks. So, it's, it's a contract that they are, in my mind, breaching.
Well, I mean, one, one solution to the problem is to acquiesce to their demand for extra contractual payment. Another solution is to tell them, they make clear they have the ability to deliver this, these trucks, and if they don't, we're going to sue them for our delay damages. And I, you know, that's something for the city attorney to consider, but I, I mean, they're holding us over a barrel, they know what they're doing, and it's, it's, I really, I know you feel the same way, Mr. Whitehorn, but this, this is, I'm fairly exercised about that idea of a, a third party doing this to the city of Shreveport, the taxpayers.
Chief, actually, on these, these are, and Casey, you may want to speak to this, but this was an IFB, an invitation for bid, and I don't think there's an actual contract, it's a purchase order that's actually delivered, or that's, that's given to them that, you know, according to purchasing, serves the same purpose.
Yeah, that, that's great, Gary.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Mr. Whitehorn, would you proceed with introduction of ordinance not to be adopted prior to April 26, 2022?
Ordinance 47, amending the 2022 budget for Capital Projects Fund. Ordinance 48, amending the 2022 budget for the Streets Special Revenue Fund. Ordinance 49, amending the city of Shreveport, Louisiana 2022 Streets Special Revenue Fund. Ordinance 50, amending the city of Shreveport, Louisiana 2022 Capital Projects Fund budget. Ordinance 51, levying and authorizing the collection of a tax of 11.3180 mils per dollar on all property, subject to abdolarium taxation within the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, for the year 2022, for the purpose of paying principal and interest on the outstanding general obligation fund of the city of Shreveport. Ordinance 52, levying and authorizing the collection of various taxes totaling 17.770 mils per dollar on all property, subject to abdolarium taxation within the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, for the year 2022, in the amounts and for the purposes described herein. Ordinance 53, levying and authorizing the collection of a tax of 9.040 mils per dollar on all property, subject to abdolarium taxation, within the bounds of Downtown Development District of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, as defined by Louisiana Revised Statute 33 2740 dot 38, for the year 2022. Ordinance 54, to amend Chapter 46, Medical Services, Section 102, Application Procedure, Section 5, Vehicle Compliance for the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances.
Thank you. Are there any questions on any of these items? Now, Mr. Whitehorn, would you proceed with ordinance on second reading and final passage?
Ordinance 37, an ordinance to create the establishment, I'm sorry, to create and establish the intersection of Fern Loop and Fern Circle as a stop intersection. Ordinance 39, amending the 2022 budget for general fund and otherwise providing, with respect there to... Ordinance 40, amending the 2022 budget for Capital Projects Fund. Ordinance 41, amending the 2022 budget for the Streets Special Revenue Fund. Ordinance 42, amending the city of Louisiana, city of Shreveport, Louisiana 2022 Capital Projects Fund budget. Ordinance 43, amending the 2022 Airport Capital Improvement Fund budget. Ordinance 44, to amend Cap, Chapter 38, Article 2, Section 4, Division 4, Section 31, of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances, relative to the procedure for the abatement of inoperable vehicle violations. Ordinance 45, to amend Section 38 dot 5 dash 6 of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances, relative to the procedure for issuance of summons to environmental court. Ordinance 46, to amend Section 90 dash 124 of Chapter 90 of the Shreveport Code of Ordinances, relative to certain types of trucks being prohibited on certain streets.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there any table legislation to be removed from the table today?
I believe ordinance 72 may be removed from the table tomorrow.
That's it. Thank you. We have no property standards, AVO appeals to consider today. We have no MPC or DBA appointments, appeals to consider tomorrow. We have one tomorrow. Are there any other appeals, Madam Clerk?
There are none.
Are there any reports from officers, boards, or committees? Madam Clerk, is there a clerk report?
Yes, we received letters of appointment from the mayor's office on April 1st and April 7th, subject to confirmation on April 26th, for the zoning board of appeals, Jacoby Marshall and Bernie Woods, and these are the two appointments that the MPC is requesting that the council suspend the rules and add them to the agenda and take them up tomorrow. I believe their, the DBA meeting is next Wednesday, so before the next council meeting.
Thank you. We have requests from the city attorney to go into executive session to discuss the following Valentine's ambulance service, Inc. versus city of Shreveport, ETL, case number 633264-B, First Judicial District Court, Cattle Parish, Louisiana. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, seconded by Councilman Bowman. Unfavored. Are there any questions?
Motion carries with five.
Thank you. This particular time, we're asking that everyone would clear the council chamber, and we will go into executive session.